Is it on now?
Yeah.
Well, I can't.
It's not working.
Get a little closer, Terry, to try and get it.
Here's the sound, Manny.
How was this one?
Go ahead. Feel fixed, feel fixed.
That's it, let's go. Hello?
Yep.
No? Hello?
Yep.
Better? Okay. Alright, we'll get here in a minute. Thank you all for coming tonight. We are here for the Newcastle City Council Candidate Forum. So if we could start with an invocation. Stanley, would you lead us? I don't mean to put you on the spot, but would you?
We invite the Creator to join us here today. We ask for understanding of the candidates that are running for office, holding my office. And we ask that they are given the strength to have questions, answer questions with humility and honesty and with guidance from Creator. Thank you.
Thanks, Stanley. Bear, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, united in the vision with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mary. Thank you. Thank you, Mary. Alright. So I thought we would have this candidate forum in the same format that we use for other candidate forums in that we'll introduce each of the candidates and give them three to five minutes for an introduction and if they could tell us a little bit about themselves and why they've chosen to run for the Newcastle City Council. And then we'll open it up for questions from the floor and then I have questions that were sent to us in advance as well. Just a couple of housekeeping issues. Next week there is a debate, October 18th at 6:30 for the, well, it's not really a debate, it's a Board of Education Trustee Candidate Forum. And that's going to be hosted by Delta Kappa Gamma and the Newcastle Education Association. That's at the High School Auditorium on the 18th at 6:30. And then I just got a call yesterday from the Harriet Mayman's campaign. And Harriet is trying to go and visit every county one time before the election. And so she can get our feedback to hopefully use when she heads to Washington in November. So she's going to be here on November 6th, it's Sunday. She'll be here between about 4:00 and 4:30 here at the Newcastle Lodge. So I'll get more information out about that. But if you'd like to see Harriet and give her your thoughts before the election, please join us on November 6th. Alright. Another thing too, Levi Tanci is on the ballot for the Newcastle City Council. He has withdrawn, so please don't vote for him. I hope you can use your hope somewhere where it will really count too. So without further ado, if I could introduce our first candidate, Donald Stevenson.
Hopefully I won't bore you too much, we didn't bring any pillows today, thank you. Let's know, I'm Donald Stevenson. I'm running for City Council. Mayor to Jennifer Stevenson, and I have four children. Alia Stevenson, Lauren Stevenson, Jessie Stevenson, my daughter, my dear husband Jared, and granddaughters Jayden, Jerem, and Jordan. And son Ryan. Wife Jamie, granddaughter Alia, and grandson Tyson and Max. And mother-in-law that some of you might even know, Deb Proctor. I've been a part of this community for 51 years. Been kind of hard to believe that I've been here this long in this community. Been involved in different parts of the community, including being an active member of the Newcastle Parks Department for 38 years. Been part of the LAPC, which is the local emergency planning committee, for Weston County for 14 years. And I'm running for City Council, I feel I can use my ability and my experience to help the city with issues that we face. I've been instrumental in getting the chief seal program, going to extend the streets in our city. I've been involved in many of the projects we have completed within the city and enjoy working on these projects. The city currently has several projects that we've been working on that need to be completed in order to meet the community needs. And I understand the budget and what is needed to be just really responsible to the constituents of Newcastle. I've been appointed as the council president for the past three mayors. And so as a closing to that, I'd like to thank you for your continued support in my endeavors. And I appreciate your vote in November.
Appreciate that. Our next candidate is Ann McCollough.
I'm Ann McCollough. I think I know everybody that's here, so you all should probably know me. I am a lifelong resident of Newcastle. As a matter of fact, I go to Clareback, too. My father was born in Cambridge, so I've been here for a long, long time. Fifty-some years, 71 years. I'm married to a man that is from Newcastle to Goop. We have three children and semi-graduates. Our daughter is a teacher in the Newcastle school system and she has three children. So we are very invested in our town. The main reason that I'm running for City Council, same thing as it was four years ago. I think Mr. Boss kind of laughed at that four years ago, but I love my town. We have chosen to live here and I don't have an agenda. I didn't have one then, I still don't. I have been on the council the past four years. I've enjoyed working with the council. I've learned a lot. I know there's a lot that I don't know. I won't be the first to say I know anything about streets and sewers. But I do want to kind of try and clean it up as best I can. There's a lot that we can do that I think if we all work together, we can clean up our town to make it be attractive to our people coming in and make us proud to live here and a safe environment for our children and their families. I also think I bring a stability to the council, as you can tell, they're all males and I'm a female. So I bring a totally different view on some things that I think is very important to that thing. Women look at things different than men do, so I'm using that for a reason to, for you to vote for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Ann. Our next candidate is Thomas Boss.
Thank you. Now, when Ann said women think differently than men, she opened her cell phone really bad, but I'm not going to say a word. I'm Thomas Boss, and I'm running for City Council. And I'm doing so because I love it. I've been on the council for two different times, two years at a time. And the last time I ran for office for the City Council was in 2020, and I missed by 16 votes. Now, if you ever get the idea that your vote doesn't count, ask somebody who lost an election by 16 votes. And then they'll tell you that voting counts. So that's one of the one things to do, is get out and mention to everybody you know, even though they're not here tonight, and I believe they damn well should be, but get them out to vote at least and try to learn something about the candidates. I've been in the hospitality business most of my life. I've been in Newcastle here at Fountain Inn for 23 years. We had, of course, Crystal Park and many things here in the days when my family still had a Fountain Inn. I've been involved in the oil and gas business. And I've been, for a brief time, I had a partnership with a man named Tom Sealy and something called the Red Bull Capital Company. So I've touched upon the basis economically that we do here just about in Weston County. And I know a lot about businesses and I know what we should do. And I'm here, and I want to be on the City Council, because I think we need to step out of the box. And we need to make a serious effort at developing economics here and economic things. Small businesses, whatever we can do, we need to reach out and do something. Right now, we're not doing anything. Right now. And cities have to fix sewers, they have to fix potholes, they have to do these things. It's important. It's part of the quality of life. But also is the continuation of the city itself. The lifeblood of the city is business. And we need to start filling those businesses up. You see these empty buildings now, it's not a good sign downtown. That's not a good sign. And if we stay on the track that we're on, we're definitely going to end up where we're going. And we need to get out in front of the train and lay some new track and start a real service campaign for economic development here in Newcastle and Weston County. And that's why I'm on the ballot. Thank you.
Our next candidate is John Fuss.
I have no idea why I'm here, but I would be a non-veteran. I wasn't born here, but I like to tell you this. But I have lived here by choice for 46 years, and all my children have gone to school here, graduated from Newcastle High School. I remember all the stores that were downtown. You could buy anything you wanted without going out of town. But now everything is, you have to order the Gillette, the fish, the rapid steam. I've seen a lot of changes over the years. We've lost a lot of opportunities for job growth and jobs coming into town. But the city didn't see the need to pursue that. Now it's time to start changing that and make our town Newcastle a place where new businesses would like to move to, this would generate jobs and tax money and growth. I'm a retired bear working doctor, parent of four children, three of them have sought jobs in other areas of the country because of the job shortage here. My wife is active, I have one daughter that lives here and works here. My wife is active in the community with the senior center, teaching bridge, and I'm the Weston County Senior Center Board of Directors, and I'm on the Board of Directors. I'm also on the sports club Board of Directors. We bring, I have a problem there. I'm on, I'm on, I'm on. I think I can build a City Council position and add to the overall well-being of the city of Newcastle. Thank you.
Our last candidate is, he works at the refinery and they're shut down, so he did say that he is going to try and get here as he possibly could before. But he is working tonight, so if you could not hold that against him, that'd be great. So do we have any questions from the audience? Garrett?
Hi, I'm Garrett Morton. And this is for all the candidates. This is for all the candidates. In your personal opinion, how is the quality of communication between the city and the county right now, and how can you affect that?
Can you hear me or do I need to use the, you should use that? What do I do? Just press the button to turn it on.
Garrett, Garrett, can you hear me?
I can. Yep. Says it's on, huh?
I don't know how others feel here, but I think that they, I'm going to say it's not the best. I think we can work on that and hopefully in January, when there is new members for both councils, the City Council and the County Commissioners, that things will improve. So that's my stance on that.
I just have a question on that, because I feel it's not, communication is not very well between the two communities. As you know, communication is a two-way street. I myself have been to the County Commissioners on several meetings to try to give them information that we have on the city side. There has not been that communication from them coming to the city to try to vice versa that. So how do we try to amend that? Is trying to keep the both communities of that working together as a group, not against each other.
I think we should begin by locking the door to the mayor and all the City Council and the Commissioners at one point. And then they can't come out of there until they agree to get along with each other. But anyway, I think the communication is an important thing. I think that there are issues, and why there are issues, I wouldn't know yet. And I hope to get on that again. But one of the best ways that we can do communication is, we've elected, Garrett Morton, and I'm really good a friend of Garrett's. So if you elect me, we have an automatic connection with the city and the county, so that would be one way to start.
I'm not sure, Garrett, there's lack of communication in the whole city area, not just between the City Council and the County, there's a difference there. Everything. Every organization, they all seem to want to do their own thing. And also, the people do not bring things to the City Council or County Commissioners because they all want to drive them out or run their company.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question.
Communication between city and county.
Oh, okay. You know, I believe there are some really good communications between, and I think we ought to all work together. I mean, we're headed for the same reason, make this community better. And I feel like I could go along with anybody, talk to anybody, whatever.
Tom, I just wanted to say thank you for coming. I did explain that you were working at the refinery, so that's why you're a little bit late. Would you like a minute or two to?
Introduce yourself.
Introduce yourself and explain why you're running for the City Council?
Nice meeting you, Susan. I'm Donald Roy. We've been here for, what, 16 plus years, 17 years? Been a part of the community with the undefeated youth group, and I really want to try to give back to the community on, you know, help out with the community and maybe make it better, you know? Maybe make it like where the County Commissioners and the City Council can work together as one. And so, and I'm married, I have four kids, my wife, Mary Brumine. Like I said, we have four kids. My son was a sheriff's deputy, so for many years. So yes.
Do we have any other questions from the audience? Yes, ma'am. Would you, is it hard to come first?
Yeah.
Is this easier than Facebook?
I have attended private City Council meetings recently, finding it's all in conditions readings for different reasons. And a couple of times now, the questions that I've gotten is when people are like me in the audience of the chambers or whatever meetings are like, where is everybody? Well, I have asked several City Council people and private zoning and running out to County Commissioners, we have to change the way we put your agendas, your minutes, when you're going to have your meetings out. Not just the news, like, oh, it's people, these are the people who are in the paper, but they don't even watch the news on TV. And I'm suggesting some kind of a website or social media to announce if there's a new ordinance made. Nobody's reading the paper, you'd be surprised. This is the two new ordinances here since November, December of last year. And nobody out there knows that you exist, don't know about it. If you put this stuff, a new way of presenting information to people, the more people will be informed. And some of us older people think that if they're people, I just go look at it and find it for themselves. Well, part of our job as public officials is to give the information out to the public. So the county does have a website, and we just go on it, and you tap on Commissioners, and then you tap on Agenda, if you want to see what the agenda is for the next meeting, or you tap on this to see what they did this last one. That way you can check every agenda and see if there's reason you should go or not. But this way, it's just not, the information is not there to the public. To the way younger people do it today, and we should change our ways, we should be on that way. So I'm asking each and every one of you, do you find that advantageous?
Hey, good question, I got a question. You know, once I ran for the council, that was not one of the things that I've been done, was trying to get that out to the community. So while I've been on the council, I generated the website or the Facebook page for the city of Newcastle. And the mayor at the time was Mariana, so now the mayor, current mayor, and myself are the ones that posted on that Facebook page to get that information out to the community. Myself, I put the minutes, the agenda and stuff on that Facebook page. I also forwarded that to Kerry Droste all the time so that that gets out. So like I said, there, they do have a website also for the city that a lot of our information is on the website.
Thank you, Linda, because I think that was a very good point. I think that we should work on that and maybe do a little bit more to like the ordinances and get that notification out there.
Well, maybe user-friendly.
And maybe.
Because you never work through.
Very good point. I, thank you, thank you very much. I do think City Council has always been the first and third Mondays of the month, so unless it's a holiday, that's when it is. And that's how, so people should know that part. But I agree with you, so thank you.
We have that little emergency channel, you know, that beats your phone and tells you when there's a storm or when somebody escaped from a camp. Maybe we should put it on their phones, because all these people are walking around, they are on their phones. Maybe we could get on that channel and, you know, do it to it, and then they have it right there. They all know the world on their phone anyway, so let's get it.
I agree with Linda about communications, but there's still, people still need to go seek them. They can't just wander around and expect somebody to come up and say, did you hear? And that's usually wrong. But if we put it out on Facebook, the agenda is posted, but we do not know what results are until later. And nobody seems to want to post them either in the newspaper or radio or whatever. They just seem to disappear. They decided something, but nobody knows what it was. Thanks.
I believe that we ought to bring up to modern technology. I mean, a lot of us don't like change, but change needs to come, you know, keep up with times. And like you said, user-friendly, there's a lot of things on the computer I, you know, are not, yeah, I'm not, it's not user-friendly sometimes, but if we get a website or something like that, get it where it's really easy. So yeah, I agree with that.
Thank you for that question. As a government nerd, I peruse a lot of these information to find things. The Town of Upton's website is phenomenal. Like literally everything's there and very easy to find. Perhaps maybe we could use that as a guide or just a suggestion. Sorry, that was an aside. Any other questions from the, this department?
Things have changed a lot. I was on the council, I think, 40 years ago. But I've been on here all the time, as you know. But I read in the paper, and I cannot understand the lack of coordination between the two police departments. One of them's got one program, one's got another program, and nothing shall come between them. We're small enough that actually one good police force could do the whole county and both cities. And because of pride of ownership, nobody wants to give up anything. But in other counties do that, other cities do that. I have a little experience over Hill City where I was at the campground, and I found out on there, they don't have a police department, they just use the, I don't know whether it's the city sheriff or the, I think it was the state patrol, but that they, but there's got to be a compromise here. You can't just waste money having two departments to run this little bit of people. So that's my suggestion. I don't know what could come of it, because personalities get in the way of everything, it seems like.
Down the, I'll address that one. I worked in 1883 in Hill City this summer. We had several incidents where we needed ambulance. And one of them I called, and there was no sheriff or law enforcement involved. They just sent the ambulance over and treated the person and held him on hospice. So I would see where we can keep one law enforcement in the county to cover everything, because they'll have priorities other places. Other than that, I think we need to have both of them.
You know, it's like everything else, they need to work together. Well, if we can work it out to where maybe the sheriff's department or, you know, can work with us and have just one department, that would be fine. But it seems like the county and the city can't work together. So I mean, it would be nice if we could just all get along and I believe that if we all can get along, and then maybe we can incorporate just one law enforcement, maybe hire an extra deputy or something like that that just stays in Newcastle, you know, 24/7, and then another one that goes outside, you know, outside the city limits, that might be a thing to look at. look at.
And it's a good question because that's been come up several times while I've been on the council, I know it's been talked about many times before I was on the council. And the question I'm going to ask you guys as constituents is, back in June twenty twenty, how many of you guys have read the No Security for City budget that went out every year? Recently? One? So the communication is also about are you guys paying attention to what's being given out to you? How many know what we paid for city's police department in our budget? One point five million dollars is what we paid for budget, so does that make you look for one law enforcement unit? You bet. We can say one half million dollars could go to street improvement rate. You know, the thing we have to look at too is now the safety end through the community. We've actually had some, a little bit of discussion in that with Custer County, as you know, probably about a year ago, Custer County went to a single law enforcement, they did away with their police department, they went to a sheriff's office, I'm not sure how that's the one yet looking for there, but I do know that some Custer County law enforcement says we get into wanting to decide to go into one law enforcement, they want to come visit with us. I'm open for any suggestion to look at this, but we have to be open-minded and see the whole picture, not just one. And see what the downsides are versus what we're going to be needing for what the rest of the person's reward. And if we do away with that police department, we will never get that back, we will not get that money to pay for that again. And not having a law enforcement here to cover, just like they said, you know, the sheriff's department deputies are out on four fifty, law enforcement goes out here, we have incident going on in town, how long is that going to take that deputy to get here in town, take care of a, you know, school shooting at the most? I heard a thing we need to think about that before we just say, you know, wipe that off the board, but I am open for any of that, I think we need to make sure we make intelligent decisions.
When I was on the council the last time, this came up, a lot of artists suggested that we give over our police department and turn it over to the sheriff, and that's when I did go to Custer and talked to the people in Custer, and they wanted their police department back, because the mentality that it is to run the county and the mentality to run a city are two different things. And unless we can balance that, like for instance, if we're on the mayor, could appoint the person that is going to run the portion of the city, then maybe we can negotiate with the sheriff like that, and the city has representation from an elected official from the city. And if we can deal with things like that and like for instance, we have families that work for the city right now, that I care about, that are our policemen, why can't we, if we're going to do this, change, make them deputies? And their job is the city of Newcastle, and they don't get set down for a fee. I mean, these things can be compromised and they can be worked out, as long as we do it, but I will never support turning our city police over to the county without someone like the city council or the mayor having the say-so ultimately for what happens in the city.
There's probably labor problems, but you know, in the cities with a big police department, you've got a certain precinct, and those policemen stay in that precinct, and this could be done on the city bases too, you could have two or three people, four, five, whatever you needed, designated to stay in the city.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
They wouldn't have to go out on the, your country calls, same way in Upton, they could do that. And you think of the money that we spend for duplication, when we have an accident, who do we see, we see the county and the sheriff and the state patrol, all right there, right away. And the ambulance, the same way, we're, they're totally divorced from you from the, from the city now as far as, well, they're not divorced from it, but they're a representative, they're come from Chalé, and they, they're the ones that are the people, and they're supposed to keep somebody here, I don't know the details of that operation. There's always a way to do these things if you have a little cooperation.
Thank you, Mr. President. Any more questions from the audience? Well, yes ma'am.
Well, and some of you touched on this, there are different issues in the city than there are in the county, so keeping certain people, the same ones inside the city and the others outside the county, because then the county, people in the county wouldn't have all the city ordinances and that sort of thing, there's just different things. And so, if you did get another one department, you would, like you guys were saying, have to keep one sending area, it would be easier.
Thank you. Any other questions from the audience?
Not so fast. So, I have questions that were submitted to me by email before. What role should city councillors have, I know you turned me off, didn't you? What role should city councillors have in bringing businesses into the city, and how would you involve yourselves in that role? We start down this side?
I get to start that one? Well, the role I would like, I would like to see more businesses coming here, but could we support them? Could we have enough people to support them? I mean, it's a wise, I mean, it's one of the things you have to really take a study at and really do, I mean, we have a law regard, did we support it? A lot of us did it, you know, and yeah, his prices were high, but did we support it? Not totally against having new businesses come in, let's support the ones we have and then build them up, and then maybe we can get to where we can have more businesses, you know, yeah, I'd like to go, you know, find places that I can buy, you know, I'm glad Bubba's here, so I can get a new shirt or a new pair of jeans or new shoes or something like that. And so, yep.
Well, that's a great thought. We've had a lot of opportunities for new businesses to come in, but they have not been pursued by the city council or the county commissioners. I think if we make our town, our city of Newcastle presentable, people will come, businesses will come to us, not big ones, a lot of small ones, we see that now on Main Street, there's a lot of new places that might be, you know, just resale places or antique places, they come in and open up a shop. We just need to make ourselves presentable so that people will see us as a location to build, to move in their businesses. I remember after the Sandy Hook shooting in Connecticut, they, the CEO of Sandy Hook Firearms was looking to move out of Massachusetts, and I suggested that the city council, I told one, a couple of city council members and the mayor about contacting him and offering our city, and they said that we were too small, we didn't have the workforce, but it's like the movie Children's Dreams, we could build it, I think we'll get employees and people to come in here and take the jobs.
I think one of the best ways to roll out this is a two-way venture movement, one of them would be with the city council and a joint venture of a private corporation newly started in this community, my mind says we'll call it First Person Corporation, but it's a joint venture between the two, because it's not the city's job to try to go out and actually promote our city. But if we, if we can help them and bid some funding with a private company that is a joint venture to go out, and let's, for instance, we take one of these old buildings, like if we went out to the corner, I think it was four fifty, I don't remember what that business is called, sits there on the corner, it's a junkie. And if we buy that property and clear it off, and we take the building that's there, and we put another building there, and we have a building, and we have the city, we have the tomber and the lakes and water, the things like that that are there, we have to pick the place inside the city, inside our citizens here. I think that would have been, this is.
We can't go out of the city to do.
Anyway, but anyway, if we, if we build it, I think we have an opportunity here. The other, the other idea that I'd like to see, other than the joint venture and going out and working for businesses, because it is, like I say, this is the city's job to actually do that, and we need, we need to work with the new businesses, we might be able to lower their payroll or lower, you know, their sewer cost or garbage cost and then work with them, might have, but it's the fiber sector too, it's got to step forward. And we're looking for manufacturing, we're looking for people that make something, that can make towns, and we have right over here where Cambridge Forest Products, they load out carloads of chips every day and ship them out here. Now, why can't we maybe work with Neiman Brothers and make those parts which make here? Why should that stuff somewhere else make sense? I don't know, I've never talked with Neiman Brothers, but I think we could send a delegation from the city and a joint venture go up there, talk to them. I don't know, but if you don't try, you can't get anything there.
I agree with what this gentleman has said, I do totally agree, it's not the city council's job or whatever to go out and bring businesses to town, that's not the job of the city council. It is one that we should support them if they decide to come here and to work with them, like Mr. Ross has said, we could do many things to entice them to come, but we know necessarily that's not our job to go out and work for businesses to come to town.
Okay, he started a question, because it's been one of the things that you can kind of explain a little bit more, you know, the city councils, since I've been on the city council, have been, I believe, very instrumental in trying to look for and develop that. If you haven't heard of Project Turtle, some years ago, and I believe the mayor was in on part of that before he was mayor, there's been a couple of different ones that's come through the business council that's been brought to the city council, and we've been behind that the whole time that it's been presented to us. One of them was when Lenny Letterbee was wanting to move into Wyoming and moved into Sheridan instead. I was with that group when we put that letter together and met several times to try to make Newcastle appealing for them to come and get us. We made out several sites throughout Newcastle that they wanted for a size of paper, and when I went to Sheridan, you know, we didn't just hang our head and say, you know, we're done with that one, we're not going to be able to do anymore. Another project came in in twenty twenty during the election, Arizona manufacturer was thinking that that state was going to be turned red and they were going to have to move out of that state. Business council contacted us again, I believe Holly Orton was the one that was spearheading a lot of that, so to me, since I've been on the council, I've heard that many times that they said the city council has pushed away any businesses from coming in, but I can guarantee you, since I've been on the council, we have been straightforward trying to bring something in what's available, they're out there trying to make a deal for Newcastle too, for them to come and get us.
I'd like to add something that I carried. Well, Mr. Ross is talking about old chips, they quit loading chips here, probably seven, eight years ago, all they do is unload them, load them or not, they had a customer, they had two customers, they shipped two, and one customer said, we'd like all of your chips, we guarantee you will take them, and they dropped the other customer, so everything is loaded up, I think in Rapid City, and shipped out, were wood chips anyway.
Damn.
Any questions from the audience?
The budget is a statement of the city's priorities, more important issues are funded and less important issues are either defunded or budgetarily reduced. What are your budget priorities and how would you balance the budget?
We'll start with Don, because he has a spreadsheet.
I said, I'm only, I don't want to take away from myself, I take, write into the budget, and I actually put in my own spreadsheets on what we're spending on a monthly basis, and I present that to the council and that, and first of all, we're making for revenue and what we're doing for expenditures. So the priorities when we're looking at these, I look at these a little bit more detail and probably some others like Anne said, I might think of this a little bit different than what she might, but I take it a little bit, to me, I think probably deeper than what most people do, and maybe a little bit more time than what most people do, but I feel that I'm on that to do a job. And, you know, the street infrastructure to me is the priority for Newcastle. And we look at that over and over many times for a project right now that we're trying to figure out how we're going to get funding as well, talk about streets, what we're going to do with streets in this town. Like you said, you know, I was instrumental when I got on the department, the city council a lot, tried to see, if we don't maintain what we have, we're not going to have anything. And we're seeing that with our infrastructure, with water and sewers, a lot of our water lines and sewer lines have been in since the forties, and we're seeing constant failings throughout the town right now. I mean, looking at some of the projects that hopefully is going to take several years to get going with, but it would have been over seven million dollars to do first half and low to mid seventh half and the recovery bill. So it's not just a chump change, you know, a little bit of budget money that we have to cover and try to split up between, you know, like you might say, your kids that are wanting money to do things, each one of those kids want money to go do things, and then if you take money away from that one, why that one get more money? So we have to prioritize what's important and look at things in there, obviously, what's failing and what we are going to fix all the time, and maybe that problem go for another twenty years.
Me being on the council and me being the female that knocks much into the streets and sewer, we do kind of count on Don to do the budget, and he does an excellent job as far as what he said, he dials way more than any of the rest of us. And so we kind of count on his numbers when he brings them and shows us different things. Your question here, he said something about the big projects get more funding or get more attention than the smaller projects, or something to that effect?
So the question was, a budget is a statement of the city's priorities, more important issues are funded and less important issues are either defunded or budgetarily reduced. What are your budget priorities and how would you balance the budget?
Well, I just think that, I mean, we have to make a priority list when we do our budget every year, the smaller things, I don't think they get disregarded, but we do have to prioritize. We try and be fair, we have to be fiscally responsible to our citizens, so I believe that we try and spend the money the best way we know, so for the weekend.
I think priorities and infrastructure, I don't know, streets, water, and so on. And that's where every city has to start. And there are times that you look at these numbers and we're swayed by just to do that. You get so much vote each year. We have to stop in a certain place and you can't go any further than there out of money. So you've got to wait until the next time you get the state, you know, taxing. So it's infrastructure and it has to be our priority.
I agree with the rest of them. But I see emergencies work out there. In the city, things are breaking down, the sewers, water lines and stuff like that. And they need to be repaired over a timely manner, not just when they break.
When you say priorities, priorities are what needs to be done now. And I feel like that if I'm elected, I have a cool head and level-minded and I'm able to think things out, do the process. And I think I will be pretty fair. I'm trying to help with the budget. Not go against the grain because I want my street fixed first or my sewer fixed first. You know, there's things that need to be done first and then they can be put into different categories.
I don't want to interrupt you, it's like, we have to complain about it except one of these months.
Any questions from the audience? All right. Other than infrastructure, what do you think is the biggest challenge facing the city of Newcastle?
The biggest challenge, I guess, is the elephant that we have to chew one piece at a time is trying to get employees, not work with the city side, you know, for maintenance, but also in our place department side, you know, and that's our biggest challenge right now. And trying to work with the county commissioners on our dispatch services is kind of one of our biggest challenges that we have right now.
I think the biggest challenge that we have right now is that staffing that we have dealt with this past few years. I don't know whether it was COVID that started all this, but people just don't want to work anymore. And we have had trouble getting people to apply for our jobs and that they will stay. We can afford to give them these great wages that they say they can get other places, but we can even have, we can even get our, the jobs that we do have failed. So I think that's one of the main things that we're struggling with. I also think that just working together and making that be one of our priorities for the years to come.
What it boils down to is money. And we're involved in what I call the solo stage death. You know, I was very much alive and well, but somehow I got the idea that, oh, let's put the Highway sixteen around those eight. And it wasn't five years before the little drugstore shut down, the, you know, I mean, everything in that little city. They couldn't even keep Curly's Bar open after that happened. Well, we've been bypassed in our downtown. Now, that was some other Hanyot's idea and I don't know who, but it wasn't a good idea, I don't think. And we need to really, really concentrate on getting somebody in here that makes and builds something. And that we sell the product. And if it can't be wood chips, don't it? It might be something else, but and we have to be realistic, you know? We have wood, we have coal, we have things around us that maybe you can make things from. I don't know, I'm not a chemical engineer. But I'll bet there are coal products that we made out of coal that we haven't looked into. But it's making the money, it's getting the funding. And then we can pay our people and then we can, you know, do our city streets. But if we sit here and slowly let people die, like, well, you know, if Johnson were down there at True Values, it breaks my heart. I walked in and the first time in my life when I was eight years old, and it was called Ward Loan Company, man. And that's been here a long time in our town since. And maybe it's just a sad thing to watch it, but it isn't going to stop. You know, what's going to keep people here? Where are we going to find the workers to draw these businesses in? You know, we have a serious problem in economic, you know, and we need to take it a little harder with it. Did you repeat your question, Gary?
Ross did, Tom.
The one about secondary infrastructure?
So.
It was after infrastructure, what was your priority? What else?
The question was, with the exception of infrastructure, what is the biggest challenge facing the city of Newcastle?
I guess this law enforcement. We need to get it straightened out somehow. And bounty one point five. A lot of that's, there'll be vehicles and everything else that we figured in there. I guess just law enforcement, get things under control and bring in more tourists or everything, make our city, for example, to try to sell.
What I believe would help out the community a lot is working together, togetherness. You know, city and county need to just put it aside and get along. I mean, fire department, the police department, sheriff's department, everybody that, they need to work together. And so that's one thing I would like to promote is working together. Working with my county commissioners, working with my sheriff's department, working with the police department, working with the fire, the county fire and city fire department. Then maybe once we get together and people see that we can work together, it'll bring people in, you know? And like Anne said, you know, the COVID kind of hit everybody. I mean, even at a refinery, they paid really good. They can't keep people, you know? And it's not, it don't have to be nothing to do with money. You know, you can always find somebody that worked for what we can pay. But it's, they see that county and the city don't work together. And that's one of my things is I want to promote working together, being unity, being one, not two.
So I heard you, Don, you were talking about money and the city and the sheriff's department or how much money you spend on the police department. And I like that all of y'all brought up staffing issues because the city has, we watched as, you know, people left, even my own family members left. And so that's my big thing is how can we draw them? I know it's not the city's responsibility to like draw new companies, but what do you think you could do to maybe help, I don't know, promote or support the ones we have? I don't know, I was thinking about the website y'all were talking about making. Maybe put some of the jobs that are open in Newcastle on a website. I just had somebody visit here from Texas and they actually got on YouTube and looked up Newcastle and saw an old Chamber of Commerce YouTube video and loved it and paid close attention to it. So media does work. I just want to know what do you think y'all can do to maybe support what we have here and to maybe help with some of the staffing issues? Are you thinking of doing anything to the city council?
I know.
He doesn't know. I'm sorry. No, it's okay.
You know, it might not be a part of the, it might not be a part of the city council, but we as city council, I believe, again, if they see us working together with the county commissioners, it's going to promote more people to work together and maybe make Newcastle bigger. Make it beautiful, make it more presentable to people that want to come into the community and want to sit there and do businesses. Yeah, we can't make them come in, but we can unify it, you know, and help with it. And then, like I said, my thing is unity, working together.
I think we need to promote the Chamber of Commerce and the travel commissioner to get more advertising out for our city. Custer is only about thirty-seven miles away and they have all kinds of tourists in the summer time. They're tripping over each other, but nobody ever comes this way. We need to get our name out there someplace and it's not the city council's job, but we need to encourage the travel commission and the owners that are involved in all of that tourism, tourism stuff.
One of the fundamental ways that we could promote tourism again, and we all, I was at Fountain Inn twenty-three years during Newcastle fall. Hey, we didn't turn on our no vacancy sign ever. If we got full, we just turned off vacancy sign, left it blank. And from that building out there, we filled every other motel in this city every night all summer long. And it was one hundred percent full. Since that time, if you drive over the country, the first thing that happens when you drive up the town, you look over to the left and there's three great big motels sitting right there on Highway sixteen. And they're only open for like eighty days in the summer and then they shut down. And that's what's happened to Newcastle. Now, one thing that we could do, and this is not for the city council, this is for my joint venture. We need to promote Jewel Cable. And we need to promote it big time because it's past Custer, it's on the way to Newcastle. And from there, we can promote people right on to Devilstown. And if we put a package like that together, then we've got something to sell. And I was at Fountain Inn and put a package together that put Newcastle as the center for bus tours. And they can go from Fountain Inn to Devilstown to Deadwood. But then they can go from Fountain, come back, stay there, and then go from Fountain Inn to the Mammoth, dates down here up to Custer State Park, back to Newcastle again, and then leave here and either go south to Denver or go back through, see Mount Rushmore, and then take off back east where they're from. And if we sell Newcastle, let's say, oh, there's ways to do tourism, but it takes the dreaming. And like Anne was saying, it's history, you know, to get people to want to really get out and get going. It takes enthusiasm. And sometimes that might be the first thing that happens.
I don't know what tourism or what are we on here? I don't know what this question was, but if we're trying to promote our town, I think the main thing is to let's clean it up, let's have people take some pride in our town. Let's try to get rid of sweepster and sweep their sidewalks. I mean, make Main Street more attractive. I think we're headed there. I think we've got some new businesses on Main Street. They are doing amazing. I think it's beautiful what they're doing, but we still, we need to, we need to take pride in ourselves, in our towns and in their businesses that we do have. So that would be my main thing. I think that right there, when I go to a different town, that's what I see. I don't see the streets. I don't see, I see how pretty it is. I see the flowers hanging, the attractiveness up to town and then the friendliness. I think we just need to be kind. So that's what I'm taking. Yeah, I'm a woman, I see things differently.
And you sold them because I think that's going to be the right. The driver getting in town is, I mean, when people come driving into the town, they see people who are taking pride in their property. That's what everybody's going to see. And we have to try to promote that. I know since I've been there, we've tried a couple of informs and tried to clean up the property and it's kind of descended to some legal issues of trying to clean up abandoned buildings. It's not an easy task to do. You know, we've always supported different things that's come into town. I know people that are in here now, you know, they do a lot of their work on their weekends, working a lot of people in the town. That's the thing, it means people that takes the brains of that to offer things for people to come here. If you look at Custer during rally, how many people come into that town during rally? Look at Sundays, they have different events during the rally. And in the wintertime, if you get in there, they're smoking, sweating, and that's. It's good things we just won't offer for things for people to come here. And that's what we get. We're on West Harbor Gateway, Black Hills, perfect things here for people to do. We want hiking, we want wintertime, there's skiing. Those are the things we need to try to get people in, but to try to help do, as us, to support those people is the main thing is to support.
Any questions? Yes, may I ask?
I agree with Anne probably one hundred percent. We need to have more ordinances in this town. The worst way. So ordinances, keeping your yard开着, your place looking good and all these trailers parked on the streets and can't ride down the streets and et cetera, et cetera. But for those of you who may not know, there are now four hiking biking trails right close to Newcastle. And every time I go out to those, there are state cars there, right on the highways, a Ford and a Lightning. The Friends of the Ferry yard sale was last weekend in Fairmounts. Most people were older in Custer South Dakota and they decided when they got into violence, they'll just drive the highway this way. They seen the yard sale signs all over the road and came in a lot of friends of the Ferry Yard Sale. There are tourists, people coming into this town. And in this day and age, we may not have the clothing stores and as though they are, they get to the end of the big block stores. But anyway, they're giving the convenience stores businesses, they're giving the cafes and the beer businesses, the hotels and the beer businesses. And I can tell you, the one thing the travel commission has supported everything I have ever done in this town, including all the hiking trails, Santee Street historical, that I made on the boulevard on Santee Street, the Fairmounts. They put those trails in the, what's it called, Black Hills or something? Black Hills Trail Guide so that everybody that drives along and hikes trails, they can see our four trails. And all that kind of stuff, they put it out there. The highway that we did from here to Sundance, what's that kind of road called?
Island.
The travel commission did two of them from here to Upton and from here to Sundance. So they are buying things just for those of you who may not be familiar with that. There are a lot of people, individuals that are building things. I mean, the Beth's Rockets are building a new one out at the gravel pit. And two phases of it are done. And that's going to be a world-class mountain biking thing when they're done with that. I've hiked a bunch of it and it's pretty awesome. Sager's Marketing and her little store, she goes great in that little store. Individuals in this town are doing things and working together to make things happen. So not just her, there's like gardens and everybody else is making businesses go here. So we need to give all the citizens that are doing things credit as well to.
We are looking for a ride in two years, Karen. Any questions from the audience? I have one last question. How would you like citizens to interact with their elected officials?
How would you like citizens to interact with their elected officials? And what changes would you make to increase citizen interaction?
We have open meetings every first and third, third Monday of the month. We have put it out there, people know, they are more than welcome to come. I think our, the council members' names and numbers are posted. We're very open to have people come to our meetings and get on the agenda if you have a question.
I've always been open to the community. Um, I get several for their job. I'll be done after shuttle times, and they come back to me, then that's when I take it to the next step forward. But I've always been an open piece of that. And the communities, I feel, have been open to, you know, communicate that to me.
Now, if we can, we'll have free beer at every City Council meeting, and a chicken in every pot. Now, I think what we need to do is, is basically what we're doing now. Remember the little job that came to the council about time and he, and he wanted to videotape our meetings? And then, then, well, I think this is gonna go to the poster, isn't it? Right on, on the line, maybe, maybe something like that, I don't know. I, I have to call, I'm not very high-tech, and I, and, but I think some of these people are right, that we have to start getting high-tech. And maybe if we got our meetings out there and let people see that we're actually human, and we try to do things, maybe that would help spark some interest.
Yeah, we need communication, but like Linda, the, we need a community to all those separate projects. You hear about it afterwards, if there's an open house or, or ribbon cutting, or a new trail or something. We don't hear about it ahead of time. It's always after, or be in the paper, go look at this, what happened? And, but we need, I forgot the question already.
What do you stop at?
What would you do to increase citizen interaction?
Oh, yeah. We'd need to post a lot of videos, either on Facebook or on the city's website, or set up a website where we can post all the meetings. And we don't care if it's taken or not, I don't worry about that, I wouldn't care.
I believe that, that the city needs to get a website. I don't know, we have one? Well, we need to promote it even more. I mean, I didn't realize we had one. But, I mean, you get it, promote it, and then put these events on it. And then, uh, as far as being open, my phone's always on, my email's always open. And I would have an open door to any, any concern that I can help with.
Thank you. Do we have any questions from the interested person?
There's a writing spot for two years, Karen.
I'm gonna try a little bit. People talk about the jobs. We've got a small operation up there north of Upton, fifteen, twenty people. We cannot find enough cash generators to work, we can't find. We have one young lady just graduated from school, she dropped her running equipment. We've had another woman running equipment there, do a pretty good job. Actually, a little better than someone who was.
They look at things differently, Don.
Tom has it, what the crux of the problem with good money. Our state is a little over a hundred years old now. And so is a lot of our cities, and our water system, and everything else. We don't do anything, we depend on the mineral industries for everything that we do. There was an article in the paper where the average person pays for one-tenth of the services he gets because of our tax system. Everybody, we've got a bunch of people in the legislature now, no tax, no new tax. We gotta, can't have any new taxes, we just have to spend the money we've got. Well, somehow or other, that's not getting around the point. I've been proposing an income tax for twenty years. Our constitution is such that nobody under us figured ninety thousand or probably at most would pay any tax. It would all go to the higher-income people. We need a business tax. Our businesses, not all of them, we've got a lot of old state businesses, but we also have a lot of big block stores. And where does that money go? It goes to their old state, not, not to stay in one. We could have an income tax, and we could tailor it to where you took half the income tax that people pay, stayed in the town. That seems to be the big thing, don't let the state have it. Keep it away from the state, keep it low. Maybe it'll work, somehow or other, we need to do something to get some money. There's other things that, that, people that states that have income tax doesn't seem to bother their population. They go right on, except we have a few billionaires up in Jackson that that's where they come from. And they're the ones that are fighting, or they're up straining to fight for no tax. But you talk about a business. If a business came in here and wanted to hire ten people, they couldn't do it. And this is the way it is across the state. The only, the only thing that works is the coal mines and a few refineries. And they're the only ones that can, can attract people. We've tried to get value-added industries in the state. And I went through this when I was in the legislature. That was forty years ago, too, time flies. But, you know, it's, it's, people just don't want to, they wanna keep us in, just like we were. And you can't do that. It's, it's gone. There, I can remember days when Newcastle, streets were all full. Every store had, had people in it. I remember growing up when there was a division between the streets back in the thirties. Don't know that. There was a divided, right, and that's where they took the prison.
Longest dreams, yeah.
So, but we can't have that. People have to drive through Lush. Lush is, is more impressive driving through it than Newcastle is. Because they go through it. But they're, they're have their problems. One of the towns that I've noticed, and I don't, haven't been there for a long time, is the town Pine Bluffs, down in the northeast, southeast border, the state east of Cheyenne. Very remarkable little town at the time I was there. Nice lawn, everything was clean, they had sidewalks. There were lots more than Newcastle. But Tom mentioned those days, and I'd pipe up there. And we did have, we had two little grocery stores. Now there's nothing there.
You had a restaurant, you had a drugstore, remember?
Yeah. Well, that's the way things go. People gotta do many other operating opportunities for, for what they wanna do. Too much television, too much internet and everything else. But that's just the way progress goes, but you have to have something off there. It'll stop there.
Thank you, Don, thank you very much. Did anyone have any last questions?
I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna add to Don's. How many of you have been using your sales, your receipts when you buy something from the businesses in town? If I say county anywhere, because I'm here to tell you, the six percent sales tax quit July first. I checked out two places today and they're still charging six percent.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah? Last one?
Well, thank you very much for this.
I just, one other thing to say before we leave. Uh, all the ballots, all the ballots are gonna be printed in alphabetical order. And I want you to be sure to look at the bottom of the list, please.
Actually, I'm printing it now, but that's a little early.
I just asked them to look at the ballot, I didn't try to, you know?
Do you think we should explain the ballot? Yeah, for those that...
Oh, yes, yes.
There are some questions.
Well, now, I would, what we do, Pam, would you, the mayor or one of us, or some? We do, Pam's here, and I think we do need to explain the ballot, because it is different than what I would say.
Yes, so the ballot is a lot different this year than previous years, um, because there was a little bit of a misunderstanding or communication when it came to how many seats that we have open. Um, so for this election year, we have three seats that are open. But we do have a four seat that, um, still has two years left on its term. Somehow that turned into us having four seats, um, which is incorrect. So we were able to get the ballot fixed, but it still has a write-in for a two-year term, which is actually a four-year term. So they'll just be finishing a two-year term. So you'll see, uh, the four-year term, and then in another little corner of the ballot, you'll see a write-in of the two-year term. Um, two-year term of a four-year term, which will be on the next election. Did I just confuse you more? Um, that's a totally a write-in. That is a complete write-in. Um, there's no names or anything to choose from. So if you do think of someone who, um, who maybe is not in, um, on the election for the four-year term, that would definitely be, um, an inspiration to the council and our community, write their name in. But you have to write it spelling correctly. If it's not spelled correctly?
No.
You actually don't.
Oh, okay.
So there's new legislation that just went into effect July one of this year. It's the intent of the voter has to be clear. So if you're voting for Kerry Droste, you can't write Suzie Droste. But you can write any derivative of Kerry Droste that a reasonable person could say. But don't vote for me, I don't live in.
And they do need to be in the city, but, um, to be on the city council. That's the four, for the two-year seat that's, um, on the ballot, which is usually, you know?
Your honorary said that, that if you're a four-year candidate, that your name cannot go into the,
Write-in.
The write-in.
Correct.
Is that it?
So we're gonna check on that, we're gonna try to, that, because this is due for a write-in, all of us.
Yeah.
But I mean, if your name's on the ballot, I don't, I don't think, I think you can, can't, I mean?
I don't, what we think is not always.
Right, so I think Kerry should.
We're gonna do a job for some secretary of state.
Any other questions?
So, I just wanna thank all of the candidates for coming out today. I really enjoyed getting to know all of you, and, um, I wish you all the best of luck, and thank you for coming out tonight, I really appreciate it. Thank you.
I'm gonna save this.